Whatever you are, sir.
All right, Ed. Okay. Going to call to order the December 21st, 2017 Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Mr. Crowley, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could I have a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad? Thank you. Okay. The first up is announcements, and before we go to supervisor announcements, Mr. Schuster has a couple that he would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, there was an executive session just prior to the meeting to discuss personnel and contract negotiations. Also, the Housing Rental and Inspection Ordinance, which is on tonight's agenda, will not be acted upon tonight as we receive additional feedback. Please feel free to submit any comments as staff reviews and revises the proposed ordinance based on the feedback received. We're encouraged by all the people that have reached out to us, and we encourage everyone to go ahead and keep getting feedback going so we can craft an ordinance which works for everybody. Also, as you're aware, at our request, Mr. Savona did resign as our solicitor. Mr. Armstrong is here as the alternate solicitor through the end of the year. One thing the board asked me to go ahead and discuss is that upon reviewing our documents, we did come across a conflict of interest that Mr. Savona was involved in for county builders and the Longstreth project. We discovered that, for whatever reason, he did do a developers agreement at the end of that project. We don't know why he did that. Certainly, it was a conflict. Out of abundance of caution, we did turn that over to Mr. Armstrong. Mr. Armstrong reviewed it to make sure that there were no issues. He did not see any issues with that, and that is the only conflict that we have been able to see involving Longstreth and county builders. The township was not aware that that was happening, but after doing some due diligence, we did discover that and wish to disclose it.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. What's up, Ms. Frescatore?
Good evening. I have some announcements on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department. We're still, if you're still looking for last-minute holiday gifts, Parks and Rec has discount movie tickets, $9.50 each, ski lift tickets to the Pocono Mountains, and a limited number of tickets to local attractions: Adventure Aquarium, Baltimore Aquarium, Crayola, Franklin Institute, Medieval Times, Philadelphia Zoo, Sahara, Sam Oasis, and more. Call the office for more information. Last day to buy these tickets is December 22nd. Reservations and sponsorship donations are being taken for the Parks and Recreation Annual Wine and Cheese Bag and Basket Bingo to be held on Friday, February 23rd, 2018, at the Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center. $40 a ticket includes 20 games of bingo, wine, beer, and snacks. Sounds like a fun time. Bucks County annual dog licenses are available for purchase for 2018 from Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Renewals for the Bark Park will be available after December 20th, 2017. All current Bark Park members must renew their memberships by January 31st. New members must complete an application, provide proof of rabies inoculation, a current dog license, and attend an education class. Don't forget to register your children for the upcoming Park and Rec Annual Egg Scramble sponsored by Fulton Bank at the Warminster Community Park on Thursday, March 29th. Just a reminder, the park restrooms are closed for the winter, and the offices will be closed December 23rd to January 1st for the holidays. For more information on any of these items, please contact the Parks and Rec office at 211, sorry, 215-443-5428, or visit the website. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. Monroe?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. McPhillips?
No comments.
Mr. Crowley?
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, I'd like to welcome the new businesses that came in the last month. Miss Nail &amp; Spa Nail, Sanaa 261 East County Line Road. BB&amp;T Insurance Services is located at 320 West Street Road. Focus Behavioral Health at 169 York Road. Metro Diner opened up at 35 West Street Road. Remax Keystone, Donna Sykes, at 36 Newtown Road. Douglas Pharma, U.S. Incorporated, which is a research and development of generic pharmaceuticals company, at 1035 Lewis Drive, and Emiliano's Pizza at 348 to 350 York Road. As always, we welcome them to Warminster, wishing them the best of luck. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Crowley. I don't have any announcements tonight other than, I know it's a crowded house tonight. Everyone that's here to speak will certainly have an opportunity to voice their opinions on whatever there is. So with that, I'm going to move on to presentations. The first one is the Paint the Plow presentation. Is there someone here from Archbishop Wood? Oh, there they are. Come on up. This is, this is a new program. It was instituted. I think everyone here, if you got a chance to see out front, the plows are out there. A remarkable job by everyone. Everyone did a terrific job. The winner this year for 2017, and this is a plaque that will be hung up here in the Township Building, and every year we will add the winner to going forward. The winner this year is Archbishop Wood, and we have some folks here from Archbishop Wood, and I also have a check for $500, which was the prize for Paint the Plow. Kevin, I'm going to go ahead. Go ahead and introduce yourself. Tell us who you are.
All right. What's up, Warminster? My name's Kevin Berkins. I, I don't know what to say.
This is Kevin Berkins. He is a senior at Archbishop Wood, and he is the president of our art club, and he was an integral part of the beginning of the plow to the very end. He worked after school every single day, and it was until 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock every day. And he also managed the other students that helped out, so without Kevin, we would not have been able to do this project. So he did a great job. We are super proud of him.
Great job, Kevin.
Mrs. Kristin Bogart, I'm one of the school counselors. I run the art club. This is my assistant.
Pat.
Pat Larch. Pat Larch. She also is co-moderator of the art club. And then Mrs. Chris Tamborini is our art department chair and art teacher, and Mr. Dominic Mangachi is our assistant principal of student affairs. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a really great program. Nice job, Kevin. And get right to the bank with that check. Next up on tonight's agenda is the GFOA plaque presentation. Mr. Schuster? If you want to do it from here, it's fine. Whatever you want to do, it's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I reported earlier, the township did endeavor, when they created the latest budget, the 2017 budget, to put together not just a book of numbers, but actually tell a story, what it is that we're trying to accomplish, all the details behind it, what the departments' goals and objectives are. And there is a guidance out there on how to do it, and it comes from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. Annually, they give out an award to those municipalities that meet certain criteria. It's a very tough award to get. It's even tougher to get in the first year that you apply. I'm happy to report that we have received that award for the 2017 budget. We will, of course, endeavor to get that in every successive year, but I wanted to go ahead and present this plaque on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to the board for the distinguished budget presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Thank you. So that's nice.
And we will go ahead and put that up a wall and hopefully add more years to it. GFOA also does something a little bit special because they recognize that obviously putting together a budget like this is a group effort. But they always know, they know that there's always one person that kind of drives the ship, makes sure everything is organized, puts everything together, and is really the sole person that really put everything together to make this, make this happen. I'm proud to announce that GFOA has recognized my executive assistant, Catherine McGovern. So Catherine, do you want? Happy to give you this from GFOA, and thank you so much for all of your contributions and everything you've done. If you can imagine what it's like to get all departments together for a $15 million-plus budget or multiple budgets, it really is a task. And the end result is actually right here. So it's not a, it's not a simple document, and Catherine deserves a lot of, a lot of applause for everything that you've done. So thank you so much.
For those of you that aren't familiar with Catherine, she's one of those behind-the-scenes people that we could not run this township without her. We couldn't. The day-to-day that she does is remarkable. So, thank you.
Great job, Catherine.
Okay. Next up, I'm going to ask my friend Tom Davis to come up. I have a proclamation for him. For those of you that don't know, Tom Davis is one of our Township Auditors, who is going to be retiring, retiring from the Board of Auditors. And I have a proclamation for you on behalf of the Township, Tom. For your service. I'll read it to the, to the public. "We, the Board of Supervisors of Warminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, are pleased to recognize Mr. Thomas Davis for his outstanding citizenry and many years of distinguished service to Warminster Township. And whereas Mr. Thomas Davis has served as an elected Warminster Township Auditor through two terms and has diligently fulfilled the duties of his office for 12 years. And Mr. Davis passionately promoted the American Legion, advocating for the Warminster community, and previously served as the president of the local chapter for over 10 years. Mr. Tom Davis is more than a 25-year resident of Warminster, husband, father, and will continue to participate in Warminster community in his retirement. On the 21st day of December, we, the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors and the entire Warminster community, recognize, honor, and thank Mr. Davis for his service and generosity to the Warminster Township and Warminster community." And that's from the heart, Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Joanne, too. I'm going to ask Mr. Crowley to come up and join me. We have one more presentation for our friend Joe Cowie. Would you like to ask Joe Cowie to come up? For those of you that don't know Joe, Joe is the proprietor of the Warminster Shop Right, and he's one of the most generous businessmen in Warminster. I mean, Joe's ass, does script for everything you can imagine. He raises money for everything under the sun. As soon as he's done one fundraiser, he's on to the next one. We were talking about something recently, and you said to me, hey, that's a good idea for the next fundraiser. So the wheels are always turning. We wanted to recognize Joe in a special way, so I asked that we could present Joe with a plaque for all that he does for this township, and we're very grateful. I'd like to read it, Joe. "The Warminster Township Board of Supervisors. This plaque is presented to Joseph Cowie of Warminster Township in recognition of his many years of exceptional philanthropy, distinguished service to the Warminster community as a public servant, husband, parent, and owner of the Cowie Family Shop Right of Warminster for over eight years." That's from the heart, too, Joe. I really appreciate what you do for this township. You know, for some people that don't know what Joe does for our police officers, when they're on duty on a holiday, Joe sends dinner over for them, so they're away from their families. Like, it's things like that that Joe does that people don't even know about, that I've gotten to be a good friend to Joe's, and I really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody. Thank you to the board. I appreciate everything that everybody in this community does for me. My business is successful because of the people in this community, and I appreciate everything everybody does, and we're going to continue to keep giving back to this community because that's what makes us successful. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Joe. Mr. Crowley has something for you as well. Cheer night, Joe.
In recognition of all that Mr. McKee just told you about, the Economic Development Committee, in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors, has begun a Business of the Month, and our first Business of the Month for 2018 in January will be the Cowie Family Shop Right of Warminster, and we just wanted to present you with the certificate. And again, thank you, and encourage everybody to visit the Cowie Family Shop Right on Street Road. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. The next up on tonight's agenda is public hearings. Conditional use 2017-01, 1270 Murns Road. Mr. Armstrong?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first, well, the public hearing this evening, let's make sure the course stenographer's set up.
Don't be throwing that.
Thank you. What we're going to do is we're going to open the public hearing. This public hearing is for an application for a conditional use approval, the applicant being a SP Warminster LLC for a property at 1270 Murns Road in Warminster, Pennsylvania. The current owner of the property is Judith Doutier Ridge. The applicant is here this evening, and it's my understanding that the applicant may be requesting a continuance.
That's correct.
With that, Kelly McGowan from East Burne Gray is here representing the applicant. But before we do that, what I'd like to do, I'm assuming there are some members here this evening for purposes of this application, this hearing, so I'm going to go through a very quick presentation explanation as to what the application is for. The township will likely mark and introduce their exhibits with respect to the application, see if there's anyone that wants to request party status, and at that point in time, I'll probably pass it over to Ms. McGowan in the event that the applicant does, in fact, want to have the hearing continued. So with that said, this is an application for a conditional use for the property at 1270 Murns Road. The requested use is a Use 3A, which is the single-family detached buffer use, which is permitted in the R2 Residence District, which is where this property is located. What does that mean? In the zoning ordinance of Warminster Township, on this property, in this zoning district, a property owner is permitted to proceed with such a Use 3A, single-family detached buffer use, so long as they comply with the conditional use provisions within the zoning ordinance. And it's not a byright use, which is why they come before this board at a public hearing and present evidence and testimony with respect to the actual proposed use that they're proposing. That will be in the course of the hearing, when and if it goes forward. So this has been advertised for a public hearing, and anyone in the audience that wants to request party status has the ability to do so, so long as they have standing. What does that mean? It means if someone in the audience wants to potentially appeal any decision of this board, you should request party status. Does it mean if you don't request party status, you can't participate in the hearing, ask questions of witnesses and/or provide statements on the record? No. You can definitely provide statements on the record towards the end of the hearing, and I'm sure the applicant's attorney will allow you to ask questions of witnesses as they take the stand. So you will be able to participate if you have statements or questions at the point of the hearing. However, you won't be able to appeal it if you don't request and be granted party status. So with that, is there anyone here requesting party status for this application? And if you do, please state your name and address for the record.
Please come to the podium. I'll take the microphone.
Nicholas Onorato, 558 Ivyland Road, Warminster.
Can you spell?
O-N-O-R-A-T-O.
And address, please, again?
558 Ivyland Road.
Anyone else requesting party status in this application?
Please, please come to the podium, please.
Yeah, please identify yourself and...
It's quite all right. Take your time. It's fine.
My name's Janice Sarrow, and I'm at 589 Ivyland Road. I guess the party status, I just want to know how we proceed from tonight's meeting. It's not an approval, I'm assuming? They still have to submit? I guess I need to understand the process.
Let me, let me explain the process. I skipped over that, and I shouldn't have before I asked, but this is a conditional use application for the use, okay? The zoning ordinance of Warminster Township allows this use by conditional use approval. Nothing has been approved yet. The applicant will need to present testimony and evidence before this board, and then this board will consider that evidence and testimony at the time that the hearing closes and review it with respect to the provisions in the zoning ordinance and either grant them approval or deny them approval. And that's only with respect to the use. If they were to get approval from this board for the conditional use application, they can't then go and proceed with developing the property.
Doing what they want.
Then they have to apply for a land development application and get subdivision and land development approval from this board as well. That process involves presenting the plan to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviews it, provides recommendations to the applicant, and after the Planning Commission has the opportunity to review and recommend revisions to the proposed land development plan down the road, then it will come back before this board for purposes of that process. But we're here tonight for the use application, the conditional use application, which is the...
Residential development.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yep. Thank you.
Would you, are you requesting party status or not?
That would be just objecting to the development entirely.
No. If you want to make a statement, you can make a...
Exactly. I think we all second that, but...
You can make a statement at a point in time during the hearing, if that's what you're, if that's what you're asking.
That's fine. Yeah. Thank you.
And just so it's clear, ma'am, I'm not putting you... Ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not putting you down on party status right now, correct?
Oh, no. That's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that this isn't a final decision, and we proceed to the next. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would request party status at this time? Please identify yourself and your address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Severio Branca, 495, uh, 49, 594 Ivyland Road. Excuse me. Severio. S-A-V-E-R-P-R-I-O. Branca, B-R-A-N-C-A.
Anyone else requesting party status?
Yes, hello. My name is Amel Ray. I am at 574 Ivyland Road. Last name is spelled R-E-H.
Anyone else requesting party status for the conditional use application of the, of Ms. Doutier and SP Warminster LLC? Seeing none. Ms. McGowan, you are here. I do, I do understand you're going to likely request a continuance, but before I proceed, do you have any objections to the three individuals that requested party status this evening?
I do not.
Okay. So with that, the individuals, I'm not going to pretend to restate your names. I'll have the record speak for itself, but you will be granted party status. So going forward, what I would like to do before handing it over to Ms. McGowan is I would like to mark and admit the exhibits that the township has received in response to this application. Exhibit A, well, Exhibit Township A? Township One. We'll do Township One. Will be the application for conditional use approval, which has attached to it 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 plans, plan sheets. Township Two, which is a correspondence from my office dated November 22nd, 2017, to the intelligencer with the legal notice to be advertised for a public hearing. Township Three is the proof of publication from the intelligencer indicating that the notice was published on December 4th and December 11th of 2017. Township Four, which is a correspondence dated December 20th, 2017, from Ms. McGowan to my office with enclosed copies of the real estate sales contract with the current owner and the equitable owner in the application, as well as additional documents evidencing standing for the applicant in this case. Township Five is a correspondence review letter from Boucher &amp; James dated November 29th, 2017. Township Six is a review letter dated December 4th, 2017, from Gilmore Run Associates, the township engineer. Township Seven, the review letter from the Township Zoning Officer dated December 4th, 2017. Township Eight, a memorandum with respect to the Planning Commission meeting and recommendations, that memorandum being dated December 15th, 2017. And Township Nine? Nine? Memorandum dated December 7th, 2017, from Boucher &amp; James to the Warminster Township Planning Commission with respect to the review letters associated with the application. Any objections from the applicant for the township exhibits?
None. Thank you.
Okay. The plans were attached to Exhibit Township One, which is the application that the applicant submitted to the township. So Township One exhibit is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7 pages in all.
That's correct, and we will be separately providing those planned copies as part of applicant exhibits as well.
So with that, unless there's any questions or comments from the board at this point in time, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. McGowan, who I'm suspecting may be requesting a continuance at this time.
I am. Mr. Armstrong, thank you very much, board member. Thank you. Appreciate being on your agenda this evening. Tonight, the applicant is requesting a continuance to further prepare our case. We would request to come back before this board in January at one of your January meetings in order to present the full case to the board.
If, if the board is inclined to grant your request for a continuance, would the applicant be willing to agree on the record to an extension of time to hold the hearing in the event that it goes beyond the 60 days pursuant to the MPC?
Absolutely, and I can confirm that in writing with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need to take action on this?
No, we'll just continue the hearing. The question is, do you want to see if anyone here in the public wants to make any comments?
Sure. We can open it up if there's people here that wanted to make comments on this.
If there's anyone in the audience this evening that wants to provide comment, you can do so at this point in time. Just so you understand what just happened, we opened the hearing, we're still, there's still a course stenographer taking down everything we say. The township entered the exhibits that we have in our file pursuant to the application. However, the applicant has requested a continuance, and it looks like we're going to continue the hearing until a date in...
January 12th.
January 12th. But this has been advertised, so in the event anyone in the audience wants to make a comment at this point in time, you can. Anyone?
Please, come on up.
As I stated, my name's Nick. Nick Onorato. I live at 558 Ivyland Road. I've been a resident of that home for 41 years, so I've seen an awful lot of things going on Ivyland Road. And the first thing, I talked to License Inspectors a couple months ago, and he said the proposal was calling for one access road on Ivyland Road, pretty much across from my neighbor's house, and that would be the only way in and out of the development that is being proposed. I don't know if that's true, or if it's changed, or if there are any other plans or not, but the one access road we're talking about would be a very bad idea, considering that's a blind hill. I have had two cars of my own come out of the driveway and get crushed over the last 40 years because people coming over that hill away from the Kmart cannot see, and they do not go 25 miles an hour, where that wouldn't be a problem. They go 40, 50, 60, even as fast as the engine will allow that car to go. So that's, that was my one big concern of the access. And there are three other stub roads, you know, one on Arbor to the left, to the west, and two on the north, Sturbridge and Laurel, that I understand are not even being made use of. And thirdly, I think it's a great opportunity if, for a township to have access to this new community on Murns Road. And if you've ever been at that traffic light at Ivyland and Murns in rush hour in the morning or in the afternoon, you'll notice that your cars are backed up going north, all the way back to Penrose, going south, past the post office entrance. The cars are backed up beyond my house, 900 feet from Murns. So, you know, it would be an opportunity for the township to put a turning lane on Murns Road, and perhaps a light at the post office so people can get in and out of the post office, because right now, you're at the mercy of someone letting you in because the traffic is actually beyond the post office now, when you try and make a left out of the post office toward Ivyland Road. Also, like I mentioned, the speeding and all, but just as... Also, like I mentioned the speeding and all, but just this year, three furrow cats have been killed in front of my house. Now, why do I mention that? Cats are street savvy, and they're still getting killed on that road because they don't see the cars coming up over the hill. Can you imagine that cat being a kid chasing a ball? So to put a road right there at that blind hill would be extremely dangerous and not a smart thing to do.
Thank you. Just so you're aware, we're not going to be able to respond to that. The applicant will, at some point in time, put on their case with respect to, I'm assuming traffic, they may have a traffic engineer to testify with respect to those issues. So at that point in time, you will have, you are one of them that requested party status. You'll have the opportunity to, to ask them questions if you so.
I welcome the traffic engineer to sit on my porch for a couple hours.
Understood, thank you.
And appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point in time would like to make any comment on the application?
Hi, this is Brad.
Good evening. My name is David Parsons. I live at 1190 Sturbridge Drive. I think I heard you say that the exhibit number one has five layouts attached to it.
It has a number of plan sheets.
Okay. I was at the last meeting, two layouts were presented. And, you know, if there are more schemes that are in question, I think it would be good if we knew about them before it went forward.
At this point in time, when they submit an application, you know, there are certain requirements as to what they need to enclose in their application. And in this particular application, I know, I know that they provided a by right plan and a, a buffer plan pursuant to use, say, 3A.
The other sheets for aerial existing features.
Okay. So, so what you could do, sir, is you could request, you do write to no request if you wanted to, if you wanted to see what they applied for. But in the event that they amend their plans when they come back before the board in January, those, those plans that they originally submitted might no longer be relevant if they're changing their plans when they come back before the board.
But we will get a chance to review them before we, approval goes through. Is that true?
Yeah, there's no approval this evening. We're, it's.
No, I, I understand that. But, but the only layouts that we have seen, there are two schemes, each of which has an access to the loop that goes out onto Ivy Land Road. And obviously, there are people here tonight that are concerned about that. I live on Sturbridge Drive, and my property butts up against the, the property line of the, of the Goucher Farm. So anything that goes on with Sturbridge Drive and the buffer zone will directly affect my property. Plus, there's Nixon property behind me, and then there's another one on Laurel, the butt up against that border, that joint property line, if you like. So I'm not making any, I'm not objecting to anything at this point in time, except to say that it's extremely important to me and I guess a couple of other people to know exactly what is being looked at and what might become the final scheme. And I just hope that we will get an opportunity to review that before approval and go ahead is issued.
Yeah, like I, like I said to the, the individual that spoke before you, when the applicant presents their evidence and their testimony, you'll have an opportunity to review the plan that they, they provide to this board and ask questions if you so like.
Okay, well, then I'm okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments at this point in time with, for this application? Seeing none, I think we can continue the hearing until I believe it was January 18th.
That's correct.
Of 2018 at 7:00.
That's correct.
Right here at Warmminster Township Municipal Building.
At present, it's scheduled to be here, but based on the crowd size, I may want to investigate having a different location. So let me get back to the board on that, and of course, we'll keep everyone informed. We just want to make sure that whatever location we have, it can accommodate the, the people that are here.
What date will we be doing that?
It'll, it'll, January 18th.
Okay, thank you.
Board member, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Happy New Year to you too.
Same to you.
So with that, we'll close, well, we'll continue the hearing until January 18th, 2018.
Okay, while, while we're doing this, Pat, I wanted to go to new business item B and move that up on the agenda to now, and that is the adoption of ordinance 743 to amend the rental housing inspection program and repeal contractor registration ordinance.
Sure. It's my understanding that the board of supervisors have been working on or have at least reviewed a draft ordinance intended to amend Chapter 13 and specifically Part 9 to adopt certain regulations with respect to rental housing licenses. It's my understanding that it's been advertised for a public hearing this evening, but it's also my understanding that the board and staff, or at least the staff wishes to review it and potentially consider additional revisions to the ordinance pursuant and react, and in response to certain communications you've recently received from some individuals and/or agencies. So at this point in time, we'll open the public hearing, indicate that, well, at this point in time, we're going to open the public hearing that was advertised for this evening with respect to amending Chapter 13, Part 9 of the Warmminster Township Code of Ordinances addressing regulations relating to the rental housing licenses and related regulations in the township. And with the understanding that the township staff wants to revisit the provisions within the ordinance and readvertise this for a different hearing night, it would be appropriate for the board, if you so like, unless you want to discuss it in more detail, to make a motion to send this back to the township staff to revise and/or amend the proposed ordinance for a potential public hearing down the road.
And I, and I would like to refer it back to staff. I think we've had individual conversations amongst each other, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from the public about this ordinance in its present form. And it's just to, to me, and I think to the other board members, it's unacceptable. So we need to, we need to send it back to staff to, to, to make revisions to it. So I'm with, I mean, it's, go ahead.
The only thing is, I don't know if you want to see if anyone has any comments here this evening. If not, we can close it.
Please, yeah, we'll, we'll take some comments on it, absolutely.
I wouldn't let you down. I need a cook, 911 auto lane. For those of you at home that are watching and may not have access to have printed out or reviewed this, I've been a landlord in the township for, I don't know, eight years. I'm in the real estate business, and this week at real estate closings that I was conducting, unbeknownst to the other people at the table, they didn't know I lived in Warmminster, this was the subject of conversation, how realtors are not going to be showing properties to investors in Warmminster Township because why would you want to put up with this? And I, I, I don't know who drafted, first of all, why do we need one? What other townships have one locally?
This isn't, this isn't going to be a question and answer session. If you have comments, you can prescribe.
Right, well, I know Upper Southampton doesn't. I have calls into four other townships. Why do we need it? Is it a revenue stream thing because we don't, because the state changed the mandate, and now we can't just charge this 50 or whatever hundred bucks I paid a year to rent out my property? You know, if it's a revenue stream, then do a deed registration for crying out loud. Who has control over their tenant that if your tenant, for those of you who are not here for this, if your tenant has found to have drug possession, sale or use, underage consumption of alcohol, in its current form, as I'm saying, illegal possession or discharge of firearms, possession or use of fireworks, which are now legal to be sold in Pennsylvania to Pennsylvania residents, possession of noxious chemicals or materials, or untimely and excessive noise or disruptive conduct, you can lose your opportunity to rent out your house for three years. Three years. That's a lot of money. Why would I keep this house? Anybody want to buy a house on Grape Street? Because I'm about to bail. And I, I, I don't know, even know why we need this. I think that the other thing that really struck me was that the ordinance shall be made and, and the determination by the director of licensing and inspections or their designee. That's pretty broad, because who's their designee? Mr. Savona? You know, I mean, who, who drafted this piece of crap? And why do we need it? And it's.
I think, I think we understand, I think we understand your comments.
Yeah.
And I think you heard also the chairman indicate that they're not going to be passing through this evening. They're sending it back to staff, and it will be at, in the event that.
It should have been sent back to staff before it was presented tonight or the last meeting.
Okay.
It should have been sent back to staff if they had taken the time to read this. Last meeting, I came off like a crazy woman because I was beside myself. You know, like, really? Did anybody read this before last meeting? That's my question. It's an embarrassment to the township.
Thank you. Is there any other one? Any, go ahead.
My name is Nathan Fry. I'm the owner of 493 Constitutional Drive, also about to have a, I mean, I had the same complaints as Sarah, but my issue is what are we doing for 2018? I sent my check in in July, it was returned to me. Because of this, I got a letter with the check returned to me for 2018 because we were, they were putting this new ordinance in or doing something with it, so they sent my $100 check back. Are we putting something in place for 2018? What do I do for my house? Currently, I've been registered with Warmminster Township. I've been renting my house for four years. I'm in good dues, so I'm not sure where we go with that. I mean, we're, a couple of weeks, we're, you know, we're into 2018. So that was just my concern.
Yeah, I think it's, everything could just kind of stands, it'll be stay or an abeyance with respect to, you know, that process until this board gets an ordinance that they're comfortable with moving forward with.
Okay.
Timeframe as to when that's going to be, I don't think we know at this point in time.
And then one thing I just want to put on the record, I know the ordinance was written for like new contracts, you know, it's kind of how it went through, like for a new applicant. I just want to know if there's something in there for applicants that already have tenants in their house in regards to the inspection. When I first rented my house for inspection, I had to have an electrician come in, you know, certified electric that was outside the township but approved through the township. Plus, I had to have a heating company come in, do a heater cert onto the, my house to make sure it was okay. Plus, then the township came in. So, you know, I ended up spending like $650 just in inspection fees just to do it, and then they're saying they're going to inspect it every two years. So that, you know, that was four years ago. I don't know what the costs are. But I'm wondering is, because my house was already, came in, they inspected the heater, they inspected the electrician, am I, am I granted, you know, grandfathered in for that and maybe just Warmminster comes in?
You can't answer that question.
No, I just wanted to put it on as just a comment for, you know, just thoughts on it.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Barton. I reside at 116 West Kennedy Road in North Wells. My parents since passed, lived and built homes in Warmminster Township for 62 years. I grew up in Warmminster Township as well, and I've built in Warmminster. I also have rental properties in Warmminster, and I am very concerned about this proposed ordinance. The first thing is the inspection. I guess I would like to look at the board and say, how would you like someone to come into your home around your family, around your pets, moving your private things? It's, it's almost like you're a criminal because you're renting, and these people are paying rent, they're upstanding people, and, and then the township has a right to come in and go through their things with their, to inspect their properties? It's, it's, it's going against their freedom. As far as the other situation of the ordinance, and I don't know whether the people here even realize what the township's already taking from landlords. It's not like we're stuffing our pockets with the rent. We pay taxes, we pay insurance, some landscaping, whatever. But also, we pay, as one said, $100 per unit to rent per year. They also take a percentage of the income that we are making on the rental properties in mercantile, and that's already, we already pay income tax as well on that. So I, I, you know, it's, if it's a money thing, like she said, and I guess I wanted to question, how many rental properties do we actually have in Warmminster?
Again, this is.
That this has become such a big.
If you have any comments with, there's no ordinance that the board's going to be passing this evening. So if you have any.
Right.
Comments, we're not going to be, it's not a question and answer session at this point in time.
Okay. Because I was just kind of adding up, it's quite a large sum of money if you're even getting $100 per unit per landlord already. I would think the landlords of Warmminster are producing quite an amount of money for this township. That's the point being there. Again, I will recap on the inspections. We already have a vigorous inspection in place. I spend up to $500 on any changeover. You have a chimney inspection, a heater inspection, electrical, you have, then the township comes in, you take a piece of that too as well. So I would say, after all those inspections, it would be deemed safe at that point as a rental unit. The noise, gosh, punishing the wrong person. You should have a noise ordinance for noise. I mean, if someone's making noise, you're holding the landlord responsible for someone else's actions. The other thing is, is man number two next door seems to be making a disturbance all the time, but since he owns his house, it doesn't affect him. The person that's renting, the landlord gets three strikes, they're out, so they're no longer collecting rent, which then they can't pay their mortgage. And then that goes into a foreclosed home, and then you're going to have foreclosed homes of people not in them, not supporting the businesses in the township. And I would think that the township is just going to get run down. Because if the township has the power to take away someone's livelihood of renting, which this is a livelihood for some people, renting units is, is, is a business. And along with that business comes a lot of work. It's not just, you know, roofs need to be replaced, things need to be kept up and maintained. So it's a business for people. So you, the township has the right to tell you that you can't rent your house because you've been nicked three times for noise? And is that noise validatable? Who's going to validate it? Say the neighbor down the street doesn't like the neighbor that's renting and calls and knows and is aware of this ordinance and calls three times because he wants the guy out. So what are you going to have township people go around or police saying, oh, well, was it noise or wasn't it noise? And who's paying for these people to follow up and find out what really happened? So I, I hope the township really kind of thinks about, if it's a noise situation, there should be a noise ordinance. Shouldn't be discriminatory towards landlords. Because an owner can make, it says that the owner can make all the noise they want, and they, they still get to stay in their home. But if it's someone that's renting, you're out. Thank you.
Thank you. I will remind everyone that the ordinance is not going to be voted upon this evening, and that in response to a number of individuals similar to the, the comments that you're making this evening is what I believe, you know, how, why the board is responding the way it did by moving forward and sending it back to staff to reconsider. So is there any other comments with respect? Thank you. Identify yourself, please.
I'm Shabon Young. I live at 1240 Ben Lane in Warmminster. I just wanted to encourage this township to please work with Jamie Ridge, who is the CEO of the Suburban Realtors Alliance. He represents the realtors in this community. He works with 278 municipalities, Bucks County, Montgomery County, Chester County, Delaware County. Please, I encourage you to work with him. He will help you and he will help our residents. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think we've, Shabon, I think we've been in touch with him already.
You have. That's great news.
Further public comment on, with, with respect to this matter? Seeing none, we can close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. If you wanted to maybe entertain a motion, sending the ordinance back to staff to relook at and potentially revise.
Yes, I will ask for that motion.
Motion.
Ms. Frescator, second. Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public?
I will. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I will say is that this is, and just speaking for myself, although I have a feeling that everyone would agree, this is our first opportunity that I have had to see the ordinance and have been asked to, to consider it, not to pass it, but to consider it. And I think the process worked very quickly where this was a nonstarter. So, I mean, you know, if this would have come to the vote tonight, which it is not, I would have had a lot of serious questions, and a lot of it did come from people in the public. So, I mean, I think the process worked tonight. That's all I have.
Any further comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we'll send that back to staff. Okay, that's it for public hearings. Next up is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair. Public comment, please. Ms. Lawson. Public comment, please, Ms. Loftus.
Good evening, I'm Bobby Loftus, Warminster Tax Collector. I'm here for a couple of things tonight. Number one, I wanted to remind the residents that if they want to pay their 2017 taxes, they only have till December 29th. I will not take personal checks this late in the year, it has to be a bank check, a cashier's check, a certified check, money order, or cash. If you bring in cash, you must bring in the exact amount, because I don't keep any money in my office. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, there's been a change in the way I will be due the leaning of the properties. Normally, I would lean light, trash, and taxes together and send it to Bucks County Tax Claims. They are no longer accepting that. I have to separate the trash and the light out of my leans, give them to the township, who will then in turn will file it in the district judge office. That is a major change in the way we put the leans on, and I want people to be aware of that, because when you lean at the courthouse, it leans the property. When you go to the district judge, I can't seem to get an answer as to whether that will affect their credit rating, because they're leaning the person, not the house. So if I normally lean you in the past, you will be paying in two different places, so I wanted to make everybody aware of that. Also, in January, January 12th, the tax office will be moving to 48 Swan Way. I have waited till the end of the year to do the move, even though everybody else in the building left in July, because the tax bills were out. So I will be moving there in January. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for a good job, too. We appreciate it.
Speaking of that, of the 10,200 parcels that we build this year, I have 152 left for township.
Excellent, wow.
So, that is very, very good, you know, and I know within the next, next week, I will get more in, so I just thought, gives you an idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public comment, anyone else with public comment, sure, please come on up. Whoever wants to come up.
Thank you, my name is Donna Elms, and I am a resident of Warminster. Basically, I'm here this evening to request that you look at a resolution through the Delaware River Basin Commission in regard to fracking in the Delaware Basin. I don't know if you're familiar with the Delaware River Commission, but it is a panel of four states, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and a federal agency. And they, they are looking to possibly put some wastewater or take some of our clean Delaware River water out of the area, and everyone should know that that's part, part of our drinking water. I do have someone here that is from the Bucks County Environmental Group, Sharon Furlong, if I could yield my time to her, she is very knowledgeable on the subject. Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Sharon Furlong, and I actually live in Lower Southampton County Township, but I am a spokesperson, spokesperson for the Bucks Environmental Action and Bucks County Sierra Club. So thank you for allowing me to speak to this matter in front of all of you. We are hoping that you will consider this resolution for several reasons. We believe the permanent ban on fracking and all related fracking activities would go far in protecting the watershed we are all living in that ultimately feeds the Delaware River, a river that in its turn services the taps of around 17 million people. However, that is the first part of this resolution. The second part is to call for a moratorium on all fracking-related activities, which includes the transfer and storage of already fracked and therefore contaminated water in this watershed. Also included in that second demand is the ban on the withdrawal and the discharge of that same contaminated water into this watershed. What is the good of a ban on fracking in our watershed area if we allow contaminated water to be actually released here? Warminster is a township that is currently struggling with water contamination issues, and where it has painfully found out that underneath the land of our county, the connections of water sources are like veins and capillaries in our own body. Everything, for the most part, is connected to everything else. So a contaminated area used in one place or a contaminant that is released in one place can percolate down to places never intended by the original users, and then begin to migrate and poison water sources that are near and dear to our lives, our health, and the health of all the people yet to be born. The Academy of Natural Sciences conducted their own study recently and found that where wells are clustered, adjacent streams are negatively impacted. Again, that pesky problem of water migrating. In addition, fracking procedures use massive volumes of water to the tune of something like three to five million gallons per well, and not all of it is recoverable. So water resources will become depleted even before they risk contamination with poisoned fracking water that actually is recovered. Is this making sense to anyone? There are over 685 articles in the scientific literature in the last years examining the issues of drilling and fracking, and the vast majority of those studies indicate solid evidence of potential and/or already existing adverse impacts on water and human health. Our own Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection has received over 4,400 water-related complaints from the public that stem from oil and gas activities, and that is Pennsylvania only, including private well contamination? 300 of these reports were found to be suppressed and were only made public because of Freedom of Information actions that were persistent, and a court system that eventually enforced those requests. So what other information has been hidden in plain sight? Finally, we ask you to become a voice, not only for your community, which indeed has a vested interest in this issue, whether drilling actually takes place here or not, because we all live in this watershed, but for all of us in Bucks County. The Delaware River Basin Commission listens to the voices and the actions of you elected officials far more than they do to me and the rest of us private citizens. We need you to find your voice, so we all can be just a little bit more protected in these perilous times. You are important to all of us, and what you decide to do is important to all of us and to those not yet born, and I thank you. If there's anything that you would like, more information on any of these points, I would be more than happy to make myself available, and no, I am not paid, I'm a citizen. And I have an article that was just printed on a small town in Ohio that has been poisoned by fracking water out of the site of people and government regulation agencies and anyone else, because they're rural, they're poor, and they're away from community areas. I'd like to be able to give that to you, this is a very recent article. Would you accept that?
Sure.
To you, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? LM. Come over to the podium, LM, please. LM, it's good to see you, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you doing?
Good.
Been a while.
Yes, it has.
The only reason I'm here tonight is I placed a call Monday to the township and have yet to receive a call back, but we have a question. The CVS, can someone put in writing, who owns the property between the fence and orchard? Is it, according to CVS, they don't own past the fence.
Indeed.
We're working with CVS right now to emphasize that they do own it.
Okay.
We sent the factur out, so, so we're working on it, which is why we haven't called you back yet, because we're trying to get them on board so they understand they own behind the fence.
They've been told that since 2013, but every year, and what they said this week is, well, they don't pick up any trash, because it's not their trash, somebody else put it there. So the one, there's another neighbor that couldn't make it tonight, and they go over and actually pick up the trash there, because there's so much floating around that area. She has called CVS about it, and what has come back from the store manager the other day and then their district manager is, we just don't own that property. Excuse me, I asked them who owned it, and they said, no man's land. So they don't shovel the walks, they don't cut the grass, that's why it was up over 24 inches this summer, and then the one fellow in the store, the manager, said, oh, well, some guy from township comes in and tells us, we got to do stuff. We go out and do it as a neighbor, but we're not doing it as a routine. So anyway, that's all we need, and he also said, you people don't have it in writing, so we don't have to do it. So we'd just like to know if we could have something in writing, who owns the property? Because we have the maps from the other thing, it shows it going all the way back.
I'm glad that you mentioned CVS, because I've had discussions with Mr. Schuster about their other properties in Warminster as well. I'm not, I'm not a bit happy with how they keep their properties up, and I've made that known to staff.
Oh, no. I know, because I told, I told-
You have a beautiful Wawa next door that meticulously maintains their property, and right next door is CVS, they don't trim the hedges, they don't weed their flower beds, I, I, I hear you.
Some of the, the archivati are being choked out by weeds growing up, and they-
Not just there, there are other locations in town as well.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah?
It's all weeds.
Yes.
We have pictures, just all weeds, we send them to corporate, and corporate gets very upset then.
All right.
But that's the only way you can get any action.
We'd like to get some action, especially particularly with this, before springtime, before we get back-
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I just wanted to know, and they don't shovel the snow. Now, I grant you, we haven't had a lot, but people either walk through it, or they walk in the street, and cars and people don't mix there and orchard. It's not a wide street to have people walking in, and we have told them if anybody gets hit or falls and gets hurt, the neighbors are all going to testify for them, because CVS has been told to do so. So anyway, that's all.
But we'll, we'll get back to you with, with that information.
Yeah, that was the, yeah, okay, just, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we've been back and forth with them, and giving them the ordinance, showing them that they do have to maintain any of the sidewalks on their properties, so we've been going back and forth to make them understand what they need to do.
Yeah, because they do the sides, they do the front, they do the sides, but they just stop when it gets to orchard. The other question, just for a reminder, I don't know, Express Trucks looks like it's kind of empty?
Yes.
Okay, now, I don't know if they're going to change hands or whatever they're going to do.
Right now, when we spoke with the owner, he was not planning on doing anything at the moment with it. He's said he would maintain it in any issues that the township has, he's given us his contact information to reach out to him so that he can rectify it immediately.
Okay, I just want to remind, if they do change, when we were talking, discussing that fence that was put in, we were told that whenever changes were made, that the new people would have to put in the fence to match the other, so just, just so you don't forget that.
We won't, we won't, you won't let us forget anyway, will you?
But the fence, the fence does, is doing its job, and it looks nice.
Oh, good. And that's thanks to your diligence, by the way, that is.
Thank you. Happy Merry Christmas.
You too, Merry Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah and whatever else you celebrate.
All right, is there anyone else for public comment? Yeah, please, Shabon. Thank you, LM.
Okay, you're welcome. Take care.
I promise I'll be quick. On January 2nd, the Pennsylvania changed their municipal code and ordinance compliance act, there were amendments made to that. I do not believe our current ordinance is in compliance with Pennsylvania state law. I brought some documentation for you guys to review, I'd like to see the township review this.
Absolutely.
And take a look at it, if I can give it, I brought enough copies for you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other public comment? Yeah, please.
Anita Cook, 911 Otto Lane. Where do I start? I guess I will start with the minutes of the meeting, Warminster Township Supervisors Thursday, January 4th, 2016, at which time several township residents, including myself, came to voice our displeasure at the nomination of Mr. Savona to be our township, I can't even think of the word attorney, I'm only married to one, right? So, myself, my husband, Mr. Pietrowski, Linier Mobley, several of us said, no, we didn't really want him, because first of all, he was let go three years prior, I think, and I'm paraphrasing it, he referred to the residents of Warminster as the dregs of Bucks County, like we'd really want to pay this man again. And, and also the conflicts between his firm representing two of the largest landowners in Bucks County, and if I may quote you, Ms. Frescatore, it's only a conflict if you make it a conflict. That's what you said at that meeting, and here we are, it was a conflict, wasn't it? So, also at that meeting, it was the new direction that you, Mr. McKee, wanted to take the township in, those were your words, and Ms. Frescatore nominated him, Mr. Monroe seconded it, and the only supervisor not to vote for him was Mr. McPhillips. We had a year of lots of fun and happiness at township meetings. If you recall, last meeting, he tried to shout me down, what, seven times, I had to ask him to stop talking over me. Then we go to the meeting, January 3rd, 2017, at which time he was again nominated to be our township solicitor, and once again, people came up and they were not happy with his past experiences here with the township and other places. There was a question with regards to the Lower Southampton issues going on, and was there going to be a conflict again with that? We were assured it wasn't, which apparently that assurance was incorrect, and then at that time, let's see who nominated. Motion to appoint, motion by you, Mr. McKee, and seconded by Ms. Frescatore. I think that you all owe the citizens and residents and taxpayers of Warminster Township an apology, because we, we came, we spoke our minds, and we were dismissed, and where are we now? Luckily, we had Mr. Armstrong ready to step in, and hopefully it will be a new era for the township. I suggest, as a resident of Warminster, that anything that Mr. Savona worked on in the last two years that has not come to fruition be tabled until Mr. Armstrong has a, a chance to review it, like this, this rental housing crap. And, and anything that he worked on, I think, should be audited, I think you should hire an audit firm to look at everything he did, because I don't trust him for a second, and I didn't two years ago, I didn't last year, and certainly now I don't. You know, boasting that he only paid eighty, what, eighty-seven dollars to represent us in the tax issue against Christ Home, isn't that amazing? Yeah, eighty-seven dollars, which I think we paid too much, in my, my opinion, because he did nothing, and his firm represented the other party in the transaction. I'd still like to know what happened when he had a private meeting with a former member and the people of the William Tenant House to get Christ Home to give them a property on, in Warminster on York Road, what is it, an acre and a half, two-acre, four-bedroom house for nothing? Do you think that was really for nothing? Because in my opinion, no, I don't, especially what's come to light in the last few weeks. It's a disgrace. Also, we, I know he was working diligently with the Department of Navy on Shenandoah Woods, I said it before and I said it again, I think that you should back out. We can lose the hundred thousand, it's better than the seven million dollars, we will be in debt. My husband sent you all an email that Mr. Savona sent, what, three years ago, saying it was going to cost at least five million dollars three years ago to clean up that site? So how did it go from five million to two million, under the same gentleman? How does that happen? Or are we just sugarcoating everything? You designated it a blighted site, you tell the Navy, clean up your mess, clean up your mess, why do we have to pay for it? I don't know how you people run your homes, but I have a budget, I know what I can spend, I know what I might be able to spend another year, two or three down the road, I know Warminster Township doesn't have any seven million dollars, I don't care about the sugarplums and rosebuds that we're going to get grants, we're not going to get that many grants. You know, we have to raise taxes, it's, it's, it's just overdone, we don't need it. We do not need it. You know what, consider buying it once the Navy cleans it up, because we don't know what is there. We know it's poisoned land, you've designated it a blighted site, why were they not made to clean it up in that time? Anybody have any answers for that? If you, if you designated my home a blighted site, would you have taken action against me? I'm asking a question.
Yeah.
Would you have? Would there have been recourse? If you, if the township designated my home that I live in as a blighted site, would the township have taken recourse, or could they have taken recourse against me?
I'm not, this is, like I said before, this, I understand what you're asking.
Okay.
It is comment.
Okay, so no answers. Well, what, what else is new? We don't get answers when we come here, as it is. It is the truth. I don't think that you should table the housing rental ordinance for another time, I think you should just get rid of it. It's not necessary, it's onerous, I said that word last time. I don't think that, well, we don't need it, who, who else has it? I know I'm not going to get an answer, this is just public comment. I know I'm not gonna get an answer. This is just public comment. So, I hope that you will hire an auditor. I hope that you will look at what he did. You know, you can do a right-to-know. You told these folks they could do a right-to-know for the Dodger Farm, but you have 30 days, so that'll be after the date of the hearing, won't it? So, what good is it? Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, please.
My name is Kathy Hausak, and I've lived in Warmminster for the past 52 years, and have been employed by the Warmminster Municipal Authority for the last 23 years. Tonight, I'd like to give you a personal look at the men and women who work for the Warmminster Municipal Authority, who supply water and sewer services to over 30,000 residents in Warmminster. We are 45 employees, 10 women, 35 men. There are 25 wastewater treatment plant workers, 11 water distribution and production workers, and nine office workers. 15 of our employees are Warmminster residents. One employee gives his time as a volunteer fireman, serving the Warmminster residents. Let's take a look at longevity of the Warmminster Municipal Authority. There are 14 employees with 10 years of service or less, seven employees with over 10 years of service, 18 employees with over 20 years of service, four employees with over 30 years of service, one employee with over 40 years, and one employee with over 50. As you can see, majority of our employees have been with the Authority for over 20 years. Our employees have children to consider, from newborn to college age. Some employees care for special needs children, some care for aging parents, and some of us are widows. We understand our situations are certainly not unique, but they are very real to us. Over the years, our sewer department has helped residents with sewer backups, root intrusion, and routine maintenance of the sanitary sewer mains. Our water department maintains water mains, meters, valves, and fire hydrants. We provide an excellent source of clean water and sewer services that meet or exceed all known standards. Warmminster Municipal Authority has been recognized as a leading authority on well water treatment. Our office is competent and dedicated to providing excellent customer service, and is always available with any issue our customers may have. The Authority has a strong management team that is effective in managing our operations. We have a balanced budget that meets our financial needs, and includes revenues for operations, personnel, pensions, and for continuously improving our water and sewer infrastructures. For the last several years, the Authority has had many projects ongoing in the township. We have replaced aging water mains on over 50 streets, and lined sanitary sewer mains on many streets in the township, all to better serve the Warmminster residents. As you can see, we are dedicated, reliable, and always ready to serve the Warmminster residents. We understand that you are faced with an unsettling situation. But why should the Authority employees possibly lose everything they've worked for, when none of this is their fault? There must be other options that would solve your pension problems. The possible sale of the Warmminster Municipal Authority represents a loss of rate control, a loss of quality and safety of the water, and a loss of operations vital to the community. On a personal note, I read in the paper of a proposed township complex in the planning stages. With pension problems plaguing the township, where will the funds come to finance this complex? One would think that the sale of the Authority would bring a generous amount of money. It also makes me wonder that if the complex is part of the reason you are considering selling the Authority, what a shame if that is true. Not only will 45 people who work for the Authority possibly lose their jobs and health benefits, but would it disservice to the residents of Warmminster, because their rates would certainly increase? More importantly, will the quality of the water be the same if we are sold? I would urge the residents of Warmminster Township to take a good look at what is happening to the Authority, and what effect it may have on them, and then let the township supervisors know what you think. Lastly, for my fellow coworkers and myself, we would request that you reconsider your decision to sell the Authority. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Chairman, could I add? I recognize that this is not business that's front of the board tonight, but, as you know, I am not in favor of selling the Water Authority. In fact, we've talked about, I don't see why we cannot have a meeting between this board, a public meeting between this board and the Water Authority, and give the residents an opportunity to have a question. A meeting dedicated just to this issue.
Mr. Schuster, I asked you repeatedly about that. You asked me to ask the chairman, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I'm asking you right now.
If the board's so inclined, let's take the consensus of the board, if the board's so inclined.
When you say Water Authority, joint board meeting with public?
A meeting between our board and the Water Authority, a public meeting to talk about this issue.
If the board's so inclined, I don't have a problem with it.
I wanna gather data. That's what I want. We've got major issues facing this board that predate even my being on this board. And it's had an effect on everybody in this room. I'm not even talking about the Water Authority, I'm talking about the township budget. And in the year or two that's in front of us, we need to, in order to make an appropriate decision, you need as much information about assets, you need information about taxes, you need, I mean, the whole scope, I mean, everything. So, I would say any meeting would be... I would want the data first, so that way, when we do have the discussion, all of the information could be out there.
I agree with Mr. Monroe. I've been, I have not made any decision. I don't know about the other members of the board, but I have been studying our budget, trying to find ways to work through the issues that we're facing. We're not considering buying a complex this time. People are on a board looking for possibilities down the road. It's not something that is being taken with a grain of salt. We certainly care about all of our employees, and there has been, I can honestly tell you that I have absolutely not made any decision regarding the Water Authority, that I'm gathering data at this time, and doing my due diligence to do what is right on behalf of our residents and our township.
Ms. Frescatour, if I can excuse you, Mr. Colley, unfortunately, our former solicitor is running around saying that there's five board members that wanna sell the Authority. Now, for residents' point of view, they wanna talk about this. I think we should have a meeting just dedicated to this single topic.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure that that's very clear right now. You know, we spoke with the Water Authority Board some time ago, and there were things that were thrown out there. There were things with respect to the protection of the Water Authority employees. There was things that were, we talked about with any possible valuation of the Water Authority. I mean, there are a number of things that would come up that would be a non-starter to me. If you were, if we were to motion and second a vote right now to sell the Water Authority, I think it would be a 5-0 no.
Right.
I mean, that's absolutely absurd, because again, I mean, look, I mean, you elected me to be a decision maker. I think every single person in this room, if you have a decision before you, the only way that you can strengthen yourself to make the best decision that you possibly can is to be as knowledgeable as you possibly can be. And that's by collecting data, that's by talking to people, that's about things of that nature. And I think that a multi-board meeting... Listen, I mean, how long would this process take? To value and to look at the assets and things of that nature?
To just do the valuation, we've been advised it would take, I believe, two to three months.
After that, I'm all on board.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Me too.
I just think it would be putting the cart before the horse, talking about something before we have the facts.
Right, or before anybody has even decided to, that they wanna even consider that. I mean, we would certainly wanna hear from our residents. That's why we were elected to represent you, wanna hear what every one of you have to say. But again, until we have all the facts before us, we can't make a decision like that, and we certainly wanna hear from all of you. So, I agree, Mr. McKee, I think it's a good idea that we do have, once we gather all that data.
Yeah, once the data is gathered, I don't have a problem at all with having a joint meeting. I really don't. So, that's the way forward?
Yeah, we can go ahead and schedule that. I think, as the board knows, PFM was originally scheduled to be here tonight. We couldn't get the agreement reviewed due to the change in solicitors. So, it would be on your agenda for the 18th for consideration. If you do approve it at that time, the valuation would commence upon receiving that information. We could definitely set up a joint meeting.
So, to be clear, you know, since, I agree, we should have a joint meeting, and the consensus of the board seems to be after the date is received. We've done joint meetings before, I don't think it's any problem. If we have a presentation from PFM, just because there was a lot of, I would talk to people, and people thought that the PFM presentation was gonna be, oh, that's their solid authority right there. What is PFM, if they come in January 18th? What are they presenting to us? What are they asked, what are we being asked to consider on January 18th? So that people who choose to come to January 18th know what we're talking about, you know?
Sure. It is really a singular question. It is, do you wanna go ahead and get an estimated value for the Warmminster Municipal Authority and its assets? And that's really it. Now, at the same time, since they're here, they would also talk about the general process beyond valuation, if you did wanna go ahead and investigate a sale. But the only thing that's going to be actionable at that time would be whether or not for them to go ahead and do the valuation.
I just wanted that to be out there, so it's very clear.
I think the consensus here is that we will have them in to do their presentation. If the board's inclined to do the valuation, when that's completed, we will certainly have a joint meeting. And that's, I think we're all agreeable to that. I am too.
Yes.
PFM.
I'm sorry, what?
Money Manager.
Yeah, PFM stands for Public Financial Management. They're a large firm out of Philadelphia. They have offices all over Pennsylvania. They do a number of financial activities. For us, they do two things at the moment. One is, they were selected to manage our pension funds. And second, they did also run the RFP process for the issuance of debt for Shenandoah Woods and for the Warmminster Community Park projects.
We just hired them, by the way, for the pension.
Yeah, they were just hired for the pension.
They replaced, I see everybody out there snickering. They replaced the guys we got rid of. So, you know, give them a year before we start killing them.
They took the pension fund over when?
Just a couple of months ago.
And they're a large... Scotty, you wanna come up?
While he's making his way to the microphone, the only other thing I'm gonna say is, is that, I mean, again, speaking on, you know, for myself, the employees, absolutely a very important issue for me. The quality of water, very important. I mean, again, I mean, I've said it before, the number one question I've gotten at the doors has been the quality of the water. And then, of course, you know, what's been happening to this township budget? You know, it's not just a year or two. We're going back years with this budget, being squeezed and suffocated and things of that nature. If, you know, even if the Water Authority is not in the discussion, we're gonna have to talk about something. And it's, you know, it's not gonna be pretty, no matter what, you know, no matter what we want, it's not gonna be pretty, but we're gonna have a crucial decision to make within the next year or two. But those things are very important to me. Not to mention open space. I mean, it's one of the things that Kathy and I ran on when we got elected two years ago. And, you know, it's, you know, we spoke briefly about a piece of open space at the beginning of this meeting. And you know what? Everyone wants the township to go in there and buy it. And, you know, regardless of how much money that would cost. But I remember, you know, when I came up to the same podium right over here as a citizen, and I was yelling and screaming about Hart School, you know, or about Longstreth, or the other one. You know, one of the statements was, "We don't have enough money to cut the grass that we currently have." I mean, that was, that was the response. And I wanna fix that. I mean, enough, enough of doing things, you know, I don't wanna say on the cheap, but, you know, we haven't, in my view, because of the budget, we haven't been running the township the way it needs to be run. And it is a long-term problem, and it needs to be solved. And again, just to reiterate, the only way you're gonna solve it is by throwing everything out on the table and really making a phenomenal decision. And that's what we need to do in the next two years.
Good evening, Scott, I was up running drive. Just based on the conversations tonight, Mr. Schuster, you talked about possibly a different venue. You got Dodger Farm, you're gonna have this presentation. I was number 82 walking in the door tonight. This room only holds 91. So, you guys may wanna think of a different venue for the January 18th meeting.
Yeah, I think you were out of the room when I actually made an announcement that I'm already considering a different...
I just wanted to reiterate that you may wanna do that now. You have two high priority items for residents.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Your house?
Anyone else with public comment?
Sure, Dave.
Gatecast, 420 Hawthorne Street. The Municipal Authority of Warmminster Township is the only thing in this township that really isn't broke. And we're trying to fix it. I mean, it's not your guys' fault that we're, you know, where we're at financially, but you sell the Municipal Authority, you sell the Municipal Authority, solves your problem. Doesn't solve my problem, because the next guy coming in is gonna charge me two, three, four times the amount for my water. I'm still gonna have to pay the water. I'm either gonna pay the money to, you know, the big "we say so" company, or I'm gonna pay it to you guys in taxes to pay off the pension fund and all the other things that we have going on here. I mean, if we're in that dire of a situation, why are we buying park land? I mean, it's a great idea, but if the pocket's empty, we don't buy it. We bought land up by the, the...
Public Works.
The municipal, the Public Works. Do we need it? I don't know. What are we gonna do with it? But that was money that we didn't need to spend if we're in that dire of a situation. And I think, I don't think spending the money on, or selling off the Water Authority is an answer at all. So, that's just my opinion. And I have a situation where I was thinking, but your guys' track record with the school district is really not very good. But they have Johnsville Elementary open because they got out of it. It's gonna cost them $2 million to get out of there, to tear it down and remediate it. They could give it to you guys with no strings attached, and Warmminster citizens save $2 million. I mean, it's out of the box, but you're looking for answers to throw under the table. But if it doesn't cost us money, I think that's another option you should look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Well, sure, Tim.
A couple of quick things. I'm happy I'm not in your seat, really. Thank you for what you do. I've been an elected official. I know it's a tough job, and I appreciate all what you guys do. Second thing is, there was a statement, and there's people here that are very concerned about water quality. I applaud those efforts. One of the statements was made that we have water quality issues here. If you want good water quality, you have to be a Warmminster. The surrounding municipalities, they don't have the same standard that we do, that we meet. If you want, if PFCs are your issue, the Warmminster Authority's been the lead on that issue. Warrington, just end of November, they have the ability to produce water at non-detect or near non-detect. We've had that for a long time. The other surrounding communities, they have wells that have PFC contamination, but under the regulations, under 70 parts. Some of those are served by Aqua, a lot of them are served by Aqua, and some of those communities have 40 parts. Our board of directors made a tough decision, whether we were going to have lowest-cost water or whether we were gonna err on the side of safety. And for our board, it was pretty easy to... And for our board, it was a pretty easy decision. Unfortunately, we had to raise rates to buy surface water, but that was an easy decision for the board to do. We erred on the side of safety in the community.
And that was the correct decision, by the way. I know you took a lot of heat, but it was the correct decision.
So, we understand you guys have a long-term problem, not of your making, we understand you're looking for solutions, you're looking for options, looking for data, but the data that you're looking for is really to value us, so you can decide whether you want to sell us. We'd ask you, that's not, we'd like to say that's not a good idea, we'd hope that you wouldn't consider that, that you look at the qualities of service that we provide, and continue to do so with us. If you sell us, you can lose the control of local operations. Decisions are made here in Warminster, they're made by Board of Directors, that are your residents. System improvements, we are not-for-profit, so all the revenue goes back for operations and improve our infrastructure. We do about two miles of water pipes a year, two miles of sewer pipe. We're doing a force maintenance over a mile next year also. Our budget, just for improvements, is about $5.5 million. That's about $2 million more than some of the other communities' water and sewer departments for their total budget in operation. So, we're putting in an enormous amount of work and dollars right back into this community. Water quality, you've heard that issue, I've talked about that. It's going to be decided by somebody else, you sell us. I think we've proven who you want to have to control water quality.
Exactly.
Rates. We were one of the lowest water cost providers before we bought surface water, now we're about average. We're still one of the lowest sewer cost operators. We don't know what, if you even consider selling us, one of the potential buyers, for-profit, their cost is a lot more. An average customer in Warminster, at their rates, are going to pay $221 more a quarter, $884 a year. That's for the smallest-sized service, and it goes up from there. And they're not even the most expensive. The total cost increase to our residents is about $10.5 million. And we discussed that, Brian, you were there, and Mark, at the meeting that we had, if you do the math, it equates to about $32.7 mils. It's a lot of money. So, we don't want to be the asset that you sell, we want to be the township asset that you keep. And we'd appreciate it if selling us is off the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else's public comment? Yeah, please, come up.
Hi, my name is Bob Wilson, I live at 669 Mason Drive. I also work for the Warminster Municipal Authority. Just heard Tim Hagie talk about money, money aspect, water quality. I think personally, my concern would be, like he said, you sell it to a big company. Do I want to pay my rates to go to, do your rates want to go to Limerick Township, so they can get a brand-new sewer line, or a new water line, or anything like that? I know I've talked to some of you, I made comments on Facebook, you respectfully replied to me, I thank you for that. But, that's what we can have with this governing body. You can speak, you have a voice. If it goes to a big company like that, you lose that voice. Again, they're all for-profit, they're for, they're shareholders. And those shareholders can be five states away, you don't know that. We don't know that, they're silent partners, basically. But, that's why, you know, for myself, and the other thing is too, he said about the rate increase, if it does sell to a private company. All right, again, working in the township, I know, you live in the township, there is a lot of seniors here. And what ends up happening is, a lot of them are fixed incomes, they don't live in Anne's Choice or 55 and Over communities, they do live in regular homes. And fixed incomes, they, I don't know if they'll be able to afford it. It's just something, yes, I do not envy your position at all, but I do wish you can take our words to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment, sure, come on.
I'm Larry Forrest, live at 308 Grace Court in Warminster. I'm also a board member on the Authority. I just want to try to summarize what a couple of people have said. Your choice here is about money, my wife always tells me, everything's about money. And the money here is what, how much the residents are going to pay. They're either going, because whatever you do, they're going to pay. Whether you raise taxes, or whether you sell the Water Authority, they're going to pay some more money somewhere. So, that's your choice. Where do you want the money to go? Do you want it to stay here, or do you want it to go outside, to a for-profit? So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Okay, seeing none, we heard you, sure, come on up, Jack.
Jack, I'm in 299 Kent Road. Water Authority is the immediate topic, and what everybody has said is true, that the considerations, and you say, well, you have to get more information. I have a tiny little cynical streak in me, and when this was thrown out, the only thing that popped into my mind is, the board just wants, there's been chit-chat about, oh, we need a municipal complex, a whole new complex, and we're going to have to spend a bundle of money on Shenandoah Woods. So, what came to my mind is, this board just wants to get their hands on a bucket full of money, so they can have a spending bacchanal, and then leave it for everybody else to pick up after whatever. They give you a grace period, five, 10 years, some such, that they leave the rate too long. But, if you wanted, if you needed money for ongoing work, people float bonds, Water Authority could raise the rates, for instance. I'm not suggesting that, but their rates are reasonable compared to most around. So, if you needed money to support the township, for instance, you could raise the rates and put it, because it's the same thing, you're just saying, well, you're standing there, and you've, a number of you in the past have said, well, we're proud, we haven't raised our taxes. Well, big deal, you could, why didn't you raise your taxes if you have a money problem? Why take it out on the Water Authority? The Water Authority is, in a way, the township's crown jewel, it's the goose that's laying the golden egg. And it's a utility, you can't do without a utility. Why you would even suggest doing something eliminating utility is, to me, just beyond, it's insanity, absolute insanity. And intertwined with this, as I said, the motive behind wanting to sell it has nothing to do with water. And I've heard disclaimers here, you all say, no, no, if you took a vote tonight, no, we'd not be in favor of it. But I can't see how the suggestion would have ever come up, if the idea wasn't just to get your hands on money and start spending. And this deal over Shenandoah Woods, before that went through, I put my two cents in that it wasn't worth $1 million, that, for nothing. It's questionable whether it was worth having. It's nothing but a headache, and now we are supposedly resigned to spending, we've heard numbers mentioned of $3 million and more, in addition to the million that we have. Plus, we wind up with a liability for the maintenance of it. It's a bad deal all the way around, we should want no parts of that. And to say, okay, we're going to spend $4 million or whatever, a million to buy it, and $3 million to fix it, or $6 million, whatever it is, and then leave it fallow? That's the purpose, to clean it up and just leave it there so nobody can use it? That's even more insane. There's houses there, properties which could be used, they've been vacant for a number of years, but the government fixed them up before this whole situation come up. They could be made rentable, and they could be made usable for, one of the reasons people that the board has shot down housing there, is, oh, well, we might wind up for the ghetto. No, if you want to restrict to, let's say, senior rentals, seniors only. And one board member mentioned to me, well, you know, we don't want to get in the rental, you have an agent, you know, you're an owner, if it came to it. But, someone said earlier, and they said, you know, don't go through with it, back out, back out now, get your running shoes on and get away from it. It's bad news, it's bad news from the beginning. We should want no parts of that. And whatever happens, we're, the township is still liable for it in a way, but to put us through the mill and want to sell the Water Authority to facilitate taking care of a bad, bad news disaster area, it's insanity, absolute insanity. I, as I said, I can't see how that suggestion could have even come up, unless the only motive behind it was the incentive to say, let's get our hands on a bundle full of money, and then we can go build that, which is useless, make our reparations, and then get this big municipal complex, which is, as far as I'm concerned, that should be a dead issue too. Our facilities are here, we own them, they're functioning, we don't need anything else. We don't, this is good enough. The market has bombed twice, and it's going to bomb again one of these days. So, you don't make your situation any worse than it is. And one of the root causes that the township, the Water Authority, their pension fund situations, I understand, is in good shape.
Yes, it is.
I was surprised to hear that the company that you're talking about getting valuation is taking care of our pensions. I don't know the details of what they're doing, but the reason that the township, the first reason, in my opinion, that affects not just the township, it's the whole state, it's the whole country, is defined benefit pensions. They are unaffordable, unmaintainable, and unsustainable, they have to be totally eliminated, they have to be. And the next time there's a crash, we set us back again. The reason that you have a pension fund situation now is because the last dump, I remember '88 and '08, when that happened, not only do we take our own losses and have to suffer that pain, we have to make up the losses of the pension fund. When pension funds were piddling amounts, people used to work for cities, municipalities, whatever, when people got into public employee jobs, it was mainly because they wanted a secure job, but by and large, they did not pay particularly well, and they didn't have luxurious pensions. And the kind of pensions that are out there now, I would call luxurious, compared to standards in the past, and in vibrant days, when pensions amounted to maybe 20% of what the original salaries was, it was maintainable if a market took a dump. But it's not now, and it's the 7.5% guarantee, and they're not getting 7.5%. It has to be eliminated. Now, I didn't bring it with me, I should have, I managed to make a copy. Just yesterday, I picked up a letter written to me eight years ago, from our state senator, and commenting that, well, they had factored it into law, that the defined benefit pensions are indemnified, that we can't touch it. Laws are made to be broken, they're made to be revised, they're made to be amended, lawyers would be out of business if they didn't, weren't constantly changing things. So, but, nobody has the stomach for it. I've gone over the school board meetings, I gave up, in times past, saying, you have to tackle the defined benefit pensions. And they said, well, we did. Yeah, okay, well, they're going, they've come up with a plan, which has been rehashed for decades, well, all new hires will get just a token amount, you know, they'll get a 401, rather than defined benefit pensions. That's, you need, for the defined benefit pensions to work, they need a Ponzi scheme. You can't have 401K workers kicking into it, because they're not going to be kicking into it. You have to totally eliminate the defined benefit pensions. Warminster can't do it, State Department, if you, everybody got beat up on their legislators. Not just Warminster Township, we've got, what, 2,000 some-odd municipalities, we've got 500 school districts. They all have to get together and pounce on our legislators, our elected legislators, because they're the ones that created this problem. They're the ones that have done, they're the ones that have identified the unions, they're the ones that put this into our constitution, that you can't break them. Well, we amended our federal constitution, we've got amendments, so, you know, it can always be changed. That's the root of this problem, the defined benefit pension that caused the shortage, that we're sitting here today, that you all scratch your heads and say, well, how can we get some money to get out of this pickle? Ah, the Warminster Water Authority, that's a bonanza, it's a golden goose just sitting there, let's get rid of that, and then we can go on a spending spree. No, no. As far as I'm concerned, discussion, you should, you should hold a vote here tonight to say that's the end of the discussions on the sale of the Water Authority. That's the place to start. And Shenandoah Woods, back out, back out, run, run. Really, it's insanity to spend millions of dollars over there for property that is useless, and you intend to continue to perpetuate, to clean it up and continue to leave it useless. You're not going to set up picnic benches over there, and say, oh, no, no, you want it left open. Get out of it. That's what they make lawyers for. And mentioning lawyers, Mr. Sabona changed affiliation, he became, you know, connected with Eastburn and Gray. Fine company, they've been around a long time, representatives from there often, and have come into this township for township proposals, things that are involved here. Due to that, fine, fine firm, and all respect, and Mike Sabona blackened her name a little bit, but that's not their fault, but even so, I would suggest that any replacement for him not be from Eastburn and Gray, that we find them from some other company. That just, too many conflicts seem to come up when they are involved. So, that's my two cents worth, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The consent agenda for this evening. Item A is approval of your minutes for November 16th, 2017. Item B is approval of Resolution 2017-40, which is the fourth document disposal of the year. Item C is Warminster Plaza, 606 York Road, land development, release number 11 final from the escrow, in the amount of $13,565, as recommended by the engineer. Item D is Police and Fire Federal Credit Union, release number two from escrow, in the amount of $18,900, as recommended by the engineer. Item E, 222 Norristown Road, release number eight from escrow, in the amount of $205,333, as recommended by the engineer. Item F, 350 Newtown Court, release number five from escrow, in the amount of $12,969, as recommended by the engineer. Item G, Hart School Redevelopment, release number 11 from escrow, in the amount of $69,559, as recommended by the engineer. Item H, Longstreth, release number one from the escrow, in the amount of $552,845. fifty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars as recommended by the engineer. Item I is Petrucci Stations at Bucks East Escrow, a partial release of ninety-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars from the Legal and Engineering Escrow. Item J is Petrucci Jacksonville Plaza Escrow, final release, nine hundred and seventeen dollars plus any accrued interest from Legal and Engineering Escrow. Item K is Petrucci Septa Escrow, final release in the amount of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars plus any accrued interest from the Legal and Engineering Escrow.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? On the board, any from the public? Sure.
Yeah, I'm Joe Green, nine oh one Roberts Road. This had the release of, I guess, funds for the Longstruth property. I was told by one of my neighbors that you are going to go ahead and do some rehabilitation to the Shamney Creek Enclosed Conduit from the head wall at, I think, the road, you know, above Strafford, to Strafford Road, is that true?
Is that the rock thing?
The developer kind of played dumb when they were, you know, doing the zoning, saying that they were going to tie into a concrete sewer, when actually, they tied into a metal pipe arch, which is like fifty years old. It's in, you know, I was there when they opened it up.
I don't know what you're talking about, so, I thought you were going to mention about the riprap rock apron that we talked about, that I'll mention later, that we resolved, but I'm not following you on anything you said, so.
I've been complaining about, from the start of the development of that property, that, you know, they should be responsible since they're tying into a water structure, some of the, you know.
So this is something that's not only through plans that you wanted them to look into?
Yeah, I approached you guys about, you know, six, seven years ago about the condition of it, and the comment was, it wasn't causing floods, because I think they were getting misconstrued about some of the other flooding issues.
Yeah, I don't believe that made it to the final approval for Longstruth, but if you want us to look into that, I would definitely document that with Amanda. I'll make sure there's nothing in the development agreement that has the developer doing anything related to that.
Was it, is the township? Because my neighbor said that, he knows Greg, I guess, and saying that there was going to be something done with that stretch of pipeline from, I think it's Tennyson to Strafford, I don't know if that's true or not.
Unless Greg can chime in, I don't think he's going to.
I have no idea.
And we'll look into it, I believe, I'll look to make sure.
Because you're releasing a half a million dollars, I don't.
Yeah, the half a million dollars, all the site work, you know, utility work, road work, you know, I don't know if there's landscaping or not, I don't have it in front of me, but that's all just the site work. You're talking off-site, which is why I'm hesitating, because that would have to be something that's in the agreement.
But they connect it to it, you know.
Can you take a look at that tomorrow, Greg?
Yeah, Amanda's saying the same thing, I don't think that made the final.
We'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look into it.
Any other comment from the public on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries, number six. Treasurers report, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, in addition to the November transfers, I have a supplemental bill list dated November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of nine hundred and two thousand eight hundred and five dollars and ninety-eight cents, as well as a bill list dated December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two million seven hundred and three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. I do make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Freskettor, any discussion on the motion, on the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is the November financial statement. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finances right now appear to be generally within the budget. If you note the bottom line of the general fund, there is still a significant gap where revenue is outstripping expenditures. Two reasons for that. Number one, we have still been getting additional one-time revenue in from these projects, that is causing revenue to come in over budget. But also, on the expenditure side, in addition to the regular monthly expenditures that we're expecting in December, we will also get the large payment into the pension funds. So we expect that that'll hit in December, and that'll cause a tightening between the revenue and expenditures. We'll have to monitor that and report out at the end of the year where that turns up. But other than that, nothing of substance, other than the fact there's a budget amendment next up under the Treasurers report for you to consider.
Okay. Any questions on the financial report? The board? Okay. Okay, next, we have to take action on this, correct?
Correct. The next item is Budget Amendment Number Four, the final one for two thousand seventeen. It's resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-one. For the general fund, we are proposing using excess revenue and unused funds in certain line items. There are multiple minor transfers, there are some larger transfers for engineering fees, for the radio antenna project, which we are putting up at Anne's Choice, as well as sick time buyback for the police officers as part of their contract. For the Park and Recreation Fund, as usual, there is additional appropriation from the Tree Escrow Fund. They continue to do a lot of work with the trees related to the Emerald Ash Bore. And on liquid fuels, there's a transfer between line items for more funds for traffic light supplies.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-one Budget Amendment? Mr. McPhillips, second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board?
No.
Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is unfinished business. Motion to approve the two thousand and eighteen budget. And I'm going to give that to Mr. Schuster.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There have been several meetings to discuss the proposed two thousand and eighteen budget. At your last meeting, you did approve it to be advertised. It is properly advertised. We have received no comments coming in about the budget. It is on your agenda right now for adoption and action if you so choose. The deficit in the general fund, as you know, is approximately one point six million dollars. And I've already gone over the financial considerations or issues at length.
Is there a motion to approve the two thousand and eighteen budget? So moved. Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, is there further discussion from the board? We can have some more discussion if you'd like, or if the public would like to weigh in.
I mean, I guess the only thing I'll say is it's not sustainable. We have to do something, not do, I mean, we've heard a lot about, you know, how we've spent the money in the last year, we've heard a lot of things about the Water Authority. We haven't really talked a lot about taxes, but, you know, I mean, this is something that we're going to have to collect it, we're actually going to get a lot of information, and we're going to have to have a serious discussion.
And we're going to have to have it this year, because we are going to be taking a substantial dip into fund balance, and that is not unlimited funds. And we worked hard to build that fund balance, it is a rainy day fund, we are going to use fund balance to make the, cover the ends this year, but after, after two thousand and eighteen, we really have some serious decisions that we have to make.
We can't dip into emergency funds, it's for emergencies, and we need to have that. I agree, Mr. McKee.
Because I, you know, I was still in favor of the three mil increase that Mr. Schuster proposed when we did the preliminary budget, just to, just to pay for Shenandoah Woods, front the money for the park, for the park projects, which we will be reimbursed by the state and the county. But that's where it is, so if there's any further discussion from the board, or from the public, sure.
At the last, at the last meeting, there was something mentioned about passing the budget with a provision that it be revisited. Did I misunderstand that?
No, the, I believe I made mention, because there was talk of the timeline, that this meeting would be really the only opportunity to go ahead and pass a budget, and it would be somewhat limited in what the board could do, because there is a restriction on a percentage basis, once it's advertised, you can't go above that. I made mention that there is one exception, and that is after a municipal election, which just occurred, the new board, once it takes office in January, does reserve the right to reopen the budget and completely redo it, I believe it has to like the middle of February. So I did make mention of that, although I haven't heard any discussion or any inkling that this is a path that the board wishes to take.
Well, maybe they will. I had a question on one of the items in the budget. The employee that works at the golf course.
Yeah.
He was moved to the general fund from the golf fund. Why isn't he being paid from the golf fund?
Because he's no longer going to work at the golf course.
Then why is he considered a golf, why did it say golf employee?
Because right now, he is a golf employee, he will be joining the public works crew as a, as a public works member.
Okay, it's kind of ambiguous in the, it should say new employee then, shouldn't it? I mean, it just, it looks like, like that we're paying for an employee from the golf course, from the general fund, when he's not a golf course employee any longer, he won't be in the near future.
In two thousand seventeen, until December thirty-first, he's a golf course employee paid for out of the golf fund. Effective January one, he is a public works employee, doing public works duties, and will be paid for out of the general fund.
Okay, but doesn't it say in the budget, golf course employee?
It might say that as a reference of the transfer. If it's unclear, I apologize.
Okay, because it just looked like, why were we paying for?
Oh, we're definitely not. There is a brick wall, it is an enterprise fund, so anything involving the golf course stays there.
Right, which it should be. It should be. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the motion, all in favor of adopting a two thousand and eighteen budget.
Can I ask one last question?
Sure.
Because again, I'm just one member on the board here, but I mean, eventually, we're going to have to see a plan with respect to what we're going to do. So we're going to have to see a plan. But let's assume for a second, we stay on course, we don't make any changes whatsoever as a board of supervisors, and we run out of money. What happens at that point?
Nothing good.
So.
I just want people to understand the giant brick wall that we're speeding towards, and I'd just like you to put that into some sort of context.
So as you're in a situation where you're deficit spending, you begin to eat into your fund balance. At that point, you look at other sources of cash on hand. You do have a little over five hundred thousand dollars in operational reserve account that was established many years, I shouldn't say many years, a few years ago. So that is another source of funding. But as you approach a point where you're no longer going to have enough money for your operations, you have to take some steps. On the expenditure side, you have to curtail your operations, and that could be materials, obviously, it's going to involve personnel reductions. On the revenue side, you really can't take any action other than, at the annual budget process, of raising the millage rate, short of selling some other asset. If you still take no action, at some point, you'll stop paying the bills, or stop paying employees, you reach the insolvency point in which you have to have discussions about bankruptcy. And I want to make clear that we're nowhere near that right, right now, but, I mean, that's the overall process. You know, as I said before, I do not foresee any problem in two thousand and eighteen. I foresee this becoming an issue in two thousand and nineteen and beyond. It's very tough to talk about the timing, because, you know, multiple developers could come in tomorrow, redevelop a whole bunch of places, and we could get more revenue in. So it's very hard to go ahead and predict the actual timing of when this will become an issue. But two thousand and eighteen, you know, should not be an issue. And also, as I stated, throughout the year, I'll always keep everyone oppressed of the financial situation, and if I foresee things taking a drastic turn, I'll, of course, advise the board.
Mr. Schuster, I have a question for you. We had discussed, and trying to roll up our sleeves and trying to find solutions, and even if, we had, speaking for myself now, we had our one-on-one talking about the budget. I was shocked to find out we were in this, this big mess. Secondly, we talked about raising the taxes, and even if we had raised the taxes to the maximum that we could, it would only have been a drop in the bucket. Am I correct?
You're correct. When Mr. McKee mentioned the proposed tax increase of, I think it was about three point six mils, you know, that would have solved a deficit that exists in the Park and Rec Fund and the Debt Service Fund, because that's where I wanted to concentrate with Shenandoah Woods and with the Wormminster Community Park, you know, I know we can't solve this problem all at once, so I figured maybe that could solve one, one issue. But where we stand right now, I mean, even if you raise taxes as high as you possibly could go, you know, you still may have an issue. We have a cap, a second-class township, fourteen mils in the general fund, you can get five mils of relief from the courts above that, and after that, you'd have to go ahead and have a referendum. You know, a lot of this depends on what occurs with the pension funds, and you have to go ahead and take a real hard look at where we stand, because it's not, you can look at, okay, we have this much, we have this gap, but the gap is not the true, it's just the tip of the iceberg, because don't forget, we use an eight percent assumed rate of return, which we know we're not achieving.
It's fairly unreasonable to be doing, right.
It is, we should be closer to seven. So even if we go ahead and fully fund the MMO at the market value rate, we're still at eight percent, and that's still not going to get us to where we need to be. So I think that if you just raise taxes as much as you possibly could, you would still have some issues. However, don't, don't.
Major issues, am I correct?
Major issues, but as you increase, you know, the revenue through taxes, it would solve certain problems.
Right, but it wouldn't solve the.
It's not going to solve the long-term systemic problems that we have.
The long-term, right. So I didn't want to raise taxes if it wasn't going to solve the problem and input additional burdens on, on the residents, is what, is where I'm coming from. And I want to be totally open to the residents and let them know, we are not thinking of getting a lot of money so we can buy a municipal complex. This is not what this is all about. This is about us sustaining our township and trying to find a solution to do that. And we will do everything possible so we can, we can find a solution to this problem, but we're looking at everything and anything that we can do that will solve our, our issues.
And we have, we have a huge unfunded liability to this pension fund, which the taxpayers are on the hook for.
Right.
They are, and it's, and I say it every year when we adopt budgets, year in and year out, it's growing. It's growing, and it's not going to go away.
It's getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
And if we go to a seven percent assumed rate of return, which we would like to work to, it's going to grow even more.
Right.
It's an obligation that we have to pay. In fact, I just signed the check the other day, to have to go into the pension fund, it's massive, and it's going to continue to grow.
I signed it, too.
And something has to be done, and that's where Greg basically sounded the alarm, and hey, we don't have to do an emergency thing this year, but we have to start looking at the future here, because this is not going to go away. It's not. We also, we don't have a contingency fund for our OPEB, and Greg will explain what that is. It's other retirement benefits that our employees are guaranteed, we don't have a contingency fund for that. So as healthcare costs rise, we have to pay healthcare for our retirees, contractually obligated to by their contracts. Where are we getting the money for that?
I just wanted to explain.
We don't have, we don't have a contingency fund for that.
I'm glad we're explaining this to you.
Yeah, and that's, and we will as this goes on, and this is what, as Mr. Monroe said earlier tonight, we're just gathering facts here.
Right.
We need to gather all the facts and look at every possible way to, to solve this problem.
And if anybody has any solutions out there, wave that magic wand, we'll be right, right here to, to take your, your suggestions, because we're doing the very best we can on behalf of all of our residents.
We're, all five of us here are citizens that are just volunteering our time to serve this township. I mean, believe me, we're not in it for the paycheck.
That's true.
Because it's not much. But that being said, if there's no other comments, I'm going to go ahead and call a question, and be open to more comments if anyone has any.
Good. I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair reluctantly votes aye, I still think we should.
Reluctantly, too.
Reluctantly votes aye. The motion carries. Okay, the next up is the Tax Millage Resolution, two thousand seventeen dash forty-two, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is setting the millage rate for each one of the funds. It remains unchanged from two thousand seventeen, is as follows. General Fund, eleven point zero nine mils. Ambulance Fund, point one three mils. Fire Fund, one point two five mils. Library Fund, one point eight five mils. Park and Recreation Fund, two mils. Debt Service Fund, point seven five mils, for a combined total of seventeen point zero seven mils. Also a note, the trash fee would remain three hundred and fifty-three dollars per year, with subject to a senior discount of fifty-five dollars per year, which would lower it to two hundred and ninety-eight dollars per year.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-two?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Freskettor, is there any further discussion on the resolution? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is new business, a ward of.
Next up is new business, award of the 2018-2020 cleaning contract to Jenny King of Philadelphia. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The cleaning contract was up. And we did go out to, to bid. A number of proposals were submitted. That's included in your package. The recommendation is to go with Jenny King of Philadelphia. We should note that this was not the low bidder. The low bidder was the current vendor. There was widespread dissatisfaction expressed by all departments with their performance. So the proposal is to go with, with Jenny King at a higher amount. However, my understanding is the, the contract was constructed in a manner in which it does allow flexibility. If we don't need them all the days that they're scheduled to come, we can scale back on that. But the recommendation is before you. The contract has been reviewed by Mr. Armstrong.
Okay, is there a motion to award the cleaning contract, contract to Jenny King of Philadelphia?
So moved.
Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Item B, we've already taken care of. Next up is the professionals' reports. And Mr. Schuster has a bit of a detailed report for us tonight, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll have my written report in case there's any questions. As I did last year, I'd like to take a few minutes and just highlight a few things that have been accomplished throughout the year. On the recreation side, we all know about Shenandoah Woods and what the situation there, as well as initiated the grant funding, funded projects over at Warminster Community Park. I think you've all have been able to see the great video that our staff put together on, on what's going to be constructed over there. Over at licenses and inspections, we've implemented a new staffing model, which has greatly increased the customer experience. We've heard, heard a lot of good feedback from that. Also put in place a new software that's, will have better record management and workflow capabilities. And they're diligently working on digitizing all of the paper records, which are basically stuffed in every single nook and cranny of that building. That's an ongoing process and they've made a, a good, a good push to go ahead and do that. On the public safety side, we've had a seamless change from Warminster Ambulance to Central Bucks EMS. We were all disappointed when Warminster decided to close their doors. But by bringing Central Bucks in, we were able to go ahead and provide that seamless transition. They are working very well out of the building previously owned by Warminster Ambulance. And they also are operating out of Warwick as well. The police continue their recovery assistance program with the, the county. They've also really stepped up their traffic enforcement. I thank the police department for that. Their stats have been steadily increasing. And as I mentioned earlier, we're finishing up the installation of a new radio antenna on top of Ann's Choice that will enhance radio communications throughout the staff. On the land use side, seems like a while ago, but we finally resolved Wawa. DVR C was approved. Fulton Bank slash Starbucks was approved. Steak and Shake, Lidl, Buck's Bagels, Burger King, 900 York Road. All land use items that you dealt with throughout the year. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the comprehensive plan, although not complete. That subcommittee is well on their way to having it done in the first quarter of 2018. You did tackle some ordinances. You did approve the codification. That was something that wanted to be done for a long time. It adds a great benefit to staff members, the community, and also professionals that want to work with us. Everything is organized in a competent manner. You've banned tobacco at all of our parks. You've updated those ordinance as well as the solicitation ordinance. On the finance side, we've brought in PFM to manage the, the pension funds. INR was selected to manage the defined contribution funds. The GFOA budget award was given to the township for the first time. Capital Improvement Plan was created and presented to the board. Tonight, you completed the 2018 budget. Pilot agreement with Christ Home was, was, the terms were agreed to. They've also implemented new finance software over in the department. The existing software was no longer being supported, was antiquated, and they were able to go ahead and implement the new software without any major hitches. And of course, we received a clean audit for 2016. On the public works side, the MS4 plan was submitted along with the work with Gilmore. They know there's a lot of work on that, as Amanda as well. Five miles of roads were paved and 50 ADA ramps were completed. And they did other facility projects such as a library HVAC, which they are finishing up right now. Five Ponds were set to finish another year in the black. And they were named the Pennsylvania Golf Club Owners Club of the Year. So a nice honor for Five Ponds. Library had a number of successful programs and did achieve Gold Star status this year. We're very proud of that. So all in all, a very good year. I want to thank the staff and everyone that contributed, all the professionals, for helping to achieve all these goals. And of course, the guidance of the board. You worked very well with everyone. And it's because of you we're able to get all these things accomplished. That being said, there are still some opportunities and challenges that we are looking at in 2018. Tonight, we've discussed the budget deficit, so I'm not going to go into that at all. We are looking to expand the relationship with Spirit Golf and increase the food and beverage business over at Five Ponds. The trash and recycling contract ends in 2018 with Mascarino. That will take up a considerable amount of time. We have a lot of work with the redevelopment authority, has a lot of work to do over at Shenandoah Woods with remediation over there prior to being turned over to the township. And the last thing I'll mention, probably the biggest challenge I see in the community is of course, the ongoing struggle with opiate addictions. Warminster is affected just like any other township. I was looking at these stats today and based on the numbers I, I've got from the police, and again, this is just police numbers. There are other stats from the ambulance and, and walk-ins and such. But right now, we've got about 28 overdoses through November and nine deaths that can be attributed to, to opiates. We do have quite a number of Narcan saves. It's probably once or twice a month that the chief is sending me a text advising me that they have saved someone with Narcan. So we're doing everything we can, but a lot more has to be done. And that concludes my end of year, my lengthy end of year report. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster?
We talked about Shenandoah Woods for, for a little bit tonight.
Mm-hmm.
The negotiated price with Audi, where do we stand with that?
Good question.
I would prefer to have that discussed in executive session as it is a legal matter.
Okay, very good.
Which we can do after this meeting if it's urgent or I could brief you.
No, that's all right, yeah. Anything, anyone else have anything, Mr. Schuster?
I loved a lot of the comments that you made and a lot of the, the improvements that we've made in the township. And that's, that goes to the hard work of the staff, you and your staff. And I appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll second that. Thank you, Greg. I know you work hard for us and we, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next one up is solicitor's report. Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have anything specific to report. Thanks for having me.
Well, you've been here 10 days, Pat. Get the ground running. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Pat. Absolutely.
Did a good job talking to Pat.
Thank you.
Nice easy meeting to start. It wasn't the, wasn't your first meeting? No, no, no. I think when you came to, to visit, your, your very first meeting was, was very similar.
Yeah, I wasn't here, but when I, I came to introduce myself and I was staying to observe and at 10 o'clock, I had to call it a night.
And you thought to yourself, what am I doing? What am I doing?
And you're still here.
I'm still here.
Never going to make it. We saw you, all right? They all said it.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is engineers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my report. Two comments. One, which I thought we were going to talk about earlier. We did resolve the Longstreet Roberts Road rock issue. I do appreciate that they brought that to our attention. Other developments did not do that. It's an option of the developer and the engineer. There's different materials. So on, this week actually, December 15th, we approved the field change to, and the developer was nice enough to agree to do this. This was something we asked. I challenged Karen to negotiate that for my office. She succeeded. And we just approved a plastic woven material to be placed along the top of the berm. All the rock will be removed and the grass will grow up. You actually won't know that that liner is there. That was done on two other projects, Leary and, and Tall Oak. So hopefully, the gentleman hears that tonight, I forget his name. But Joe, that, that will be taken care of by the developer. It's agreed to and, and approved by our office. The only thing I, comment I have is I don't have any projects in the pipeline for the planning commission meeting in January unless something gets submitted here in the next week amended. We have some applications out there. They're waiting to come back in. But there's nothing being reviewed at this time that needs to come back in front of the planning commissioner board for, for January. Everything else is approved. We have a lot of stuff that was approved. So you heard a lot of, a lot of food facilities that are trying to start construction. We have a couple more projects they're still, still trying to push before the winter sets in here. I want some construction. But I don't anticipate any applications for January as far as the lease planning commission.
How's Steak and Shake coming along?
Actually, we're doing okay. I think it was the development agreements, there were some issues with agreements.
Yeah, I can chime in if you want.
Yeah, please.
Steve Harris from Harrison Harris represents the applicant in that case. Actually, just last week, I received his tweaks to the development agreement, stormwater agreement and the escrow agreement that Mr. Savona had forwarded to him. I in turn reviewed them. I made some additional changes and revisions and I forwarded them on to him. Mr. Harris actually called me this afternoon. He, he's going to talk to his client about some of the changes that I'm suggesting. And we should have, I think I copied Greg on that email. So we should have those agreements in, in near final form in the not-too-distant future.
We should see them.
Yeah, the issue's been more on the client end. I think professional staff on both sides.
Yeah, we've been working with them. They've had financial issues and that's part of why the agreements were being held up because they were working on the financials.
Once that's resolved, they're ready to go.
I heard we got some good news from Weiss.
Yeah, the indications we've had from Weiss is they're looking into the spring.
All right.
It's definitely, it's going to happen. But my, you know my theory, until I see a shovel on the ground, anything could happen.
How about Lidl? Have we heard anything?
No, I don't think we've heard from Lidl recently, no.
No, we're working out the, they're on their third or fourth revised set of plans.
All right.
They're just back and forth. It's, they're not in any hurry unfortunately.
My understanding is that they did close on the property.
Yes.
They did close on the property.
Okay.
That's obviously a positive sign.
That, that's good.
And the only thing I want to say is, this wraps up my 10th year. I wanted to thank the board. I just realized it was, we're wrapping up 10 years. I know I get a lot of thank yous from you guys.
Should we look for the book?
I would.
Should we look for the book coming out soon?
No, no. I think someone sitting in the back row was here my first night 10 years ago. Mr. Diamond was probably either that side or that side. But I want to thank you guys for serving you. And to be honest with you, I heard a lot of the same issues years ago. I mean, it's been a struggle on the budget, some other things. But somehow you guys have always worked, worked through it and I'm sure you'll succeed again, so.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Craig, to you and your staff for keeping on top of these projects that are in the works.
It's been a hectic year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is township manager's announcement of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reorg meeting will be Tuesday, January 2nd. Normally, the reorg is on a Monday, but because Monday is a holiday, it will fall on Tuesday based on the second-class township code. We are looking at possibly one or two special meetings in early January specifically to interview firms for solicitor. I await feedback from the board on that. As soon as I get feedback, I'll work with everyone to set up those meetings. For the January 18th meeting, I pretty much discussed everything tonight. I anticipate having an agreement prepared with Spirit Golf for their expanded management of Five Ponds Golf Course. Also, the PFM proposal to value the Warminster Municipal Authority. They will be here to present. Doucher Farm, conditional use will obviously be continued to that date. And as I stated earlier, I'll be looking at different locations to hold the meeting anticipating a larger crowd.
And those solicitor interviews, that is open to the public?
The solicitor interviews, you're, you've decided to have a public meeting. So that would be open to the public, yes.
Okay. Next up is the second round of public comment. Any comment from the public? Sure, Jack.
Just one thing. You just mentioned establishing a value of the water authority. However much it's worth, it'll be worth more in 10 years and, and more than that in 20 years. It's utility. It's utility. It's a necessity. I can't, I just can't fathom why you would even consider selling it. There, there has to be other ways and the root problem is pensions.
I don't disagree with you, Jack.
So you, you go, you go for the problem. You don't look for Band-Aids. You have one thing that's working. The water authority's pensions, they're in line. They're, they're, they're up to, up to date. They're running, they're running on a, on a good ship. So I, I see no point in pursuing that line at all. Or even, you know, contracting with them to put a value on it. It's, it's worth more today than it was, you know, 10 years ago and it'll be worth more again. But it's not about, it's not, since it's utility, it's not the value of it. You can't live without one. You have to have one. And as long as we have one and it's functioning well, in spite of all the buffering that's been going on and our rates are more reasonable or have been more reasonable than, than just about any place around. And you can all remember, if you look at the papers once in a while, there's some, always some article or comment about communities that have been taken over by Aqua. And the first thing they say is, my God, you know, the rates have doubled, they're tripled. But it doesn't, they, they don't, they don't kick you in the pants right away. They say, well, you know, they'll let it stay for five years or some such. And then it, then it hits. Which means, and, and as I say, my cynical streak, I, I thought, well, you know, with this board, they say, well, if, if we sell it, nobody will notice until five or 10 years later when, when, when the real, real kick kicks in. And then we'll be out of here. It won't be ours, it'll be the next guy's headache. No, no, it's, it's the property owner's headache. It's utility. Keep it, forget that idea.
Thank you, Jack. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to supervisors' comment. Ms. Frescatore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to just say to the residents, we want to be open to the public. Everybody has a right to, for their opinions. We are looking for solutions and we will do what is best, no matter how tough the decision is on, for, on behalf of our residents. And from the bottom of our hearts, none of us have made any decision on what we intend to do. And I can tell you that honestly.
No, I made, yeah, I don't want to sell the water authority. I made my decision.
Yeah, Stan has on the way.
Yeah, I made my decision.
The other four.
I'm sorry, but yeah, I have.
No, that's quite all right. No, he, no, he is. Quite all right.
Okay, can I finish? Thanks. All right. So no decision has been made. We just have to find some solutions for our budget to be, to be soluble. Okay, on a lighter note, I would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And I wish all of you a healthy, happy and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm not going to go over the water authority, the budget and all that kind of stuff. But what I am going to talk about is the Shenandoah Woods issue. stuff, but what I am going to talk about is the Shenandoah Woods issue, because, you know, when that came before us, now, first of all, that's been negotiated for, I don't even know how, how long-
It's been out there for about 10 years.
Okay, 10 years. You know, when I came on the board, I was quickly brought up to speed, and, you know, when we were presented with a decision, what I saw from this board, and I think that, you know, and I'll say, I was proud of this board. Each individual up here made the most non-political decision, you know, in my view, because, you know, we each had our own decisions for voting, how we voted, and it was a 5-0 vote, but speaking for myself, what I was advised was that, and this is the federal government, you either buy it for a proposed price, or we're going to go to open market, and we're going to sell it to any developer that wants to get their hands on it. To me, you know, it came, the decision came to my young families, my little girls. I have a six-year-old and I have a nine-year-old. All the future families that would potentially be living in a contaminated site, playing in contaminated dirt, eating vegetables in a contaminated garden. I wouldn't live with that for, you know, 10 years from now or 50 years from now. I wouldn't be able to sleep at night. So again, for the reason for making that decision, it had nothing to do with budgetary issues, it had nothing to do with politics, it had nothing to do with anything other than future children. I was not going to have that blood on my hands, and like I said, I wanted to be able to live with that decision. Now, you know, the finance aspect of it, we did not know that the budget was going to be, this was coming. We did not know that at the time, but I just wanted to go on the record of saying that. So I was proud of that board at the time making that best decision that we needed to make, you know, but that was the reason why I made that. On that note, happy, or Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year, and thank you very much.
Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, I'll keep my comment short. Yeah, I'll just piggyback off of Brian and wish everyone a Happy Holidays, safe and healthy New Year, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, a lot's gone on this past year, but I just want to take a moment to recognize the township employees. Mr. Schuster, the administrative staff, all the departments, the, all the people of service, the police department, everyone, they represent us well, and I am very proud to get to work with them, so thank you all. I won't go over everything we went over. If anybody's interested in where I stand on things, unfortunately, I put a lot of stuff online, so you can go on Facebook and find out where I'm at, but what I will say is, thank you to everyone who came out tonight and got up and commented, and no matter what your stance is, it's important that you're out here. It's important that you're telling us to our face what you think, because honestly, that does have an impact. I know some people think that you can't really impact government. You can, and, you know, half the battle's shown up, and I appreciate everybody who showed up tonight and gave us what they thought of various situations going on in town. Lastly, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, Happy Festivus. We're a little bit early on the airing of the-
Are we going out afterwards to air our grievances?
That's what I was about to say. The airing of the grievances is the 23rd.
Can we go out tonight and air our grievances?
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know if we have enough beer for that, but we'll get through it. But what I want to say is that I hope everybody has a very happy and safe holiday season. Please be careful on the roads out there, and please, if you're imbibing during this holiday period, please, please don't drive drunk. Please call an Uber. Be safe and stay out of our squad cars, all right? Thanks.